All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And a motion by council member Pirschman.
I'll second.
And a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Great. It does not look like anybody is here or on the Zoom for community comments. We will move on to presentations and reports, the invoice cloud program launch. Ms. Judy?
I am having trouble connecting.
Do you want us to?
Yeah, maybe.
Keep moving? Okay. Then let's, no public hearings this evening. We have a consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And a motion by council member Mac.
I'll second.
And a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Okay. All right, congratulations due to a technical issue. You just got bumped up in the batting order here.
It always goes the other way. So, yeah, I feel lucky.
All right, the 2022 audited financial statements.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Well, we're going to go through the 2022 financial statement audit. We have summarized all the financial highlights and some of the things we need to talk to you about from an audit perspective. We have the report in draft. We went through things on Friday and we'll have final after we present to council. All right, so, am I moving or are you? I hit the thing and it moved, so I'm guessing that it must be me. All right, I'll figure it out. But anyways, the overview of what we have, audit results. We summarize some of the numbers, general fund, all the other governmental funds, enterprise funds, and then some KPIs that are commonly used. Am I doing it?
No. Couldn't you hear the oop from back there?
Oh, okay. The... Okay, next.
We also have it on our iPad.
What, are we in introduction or?
Yeah, next page. So, our job in an audit is giving an opinion on the financial statements. So, after we've done all of our tests and inquiries and all of the things related to an audit, we issue an opinion. And what we gave is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can get on the financial statements. We also consider the city's compliance with Minnesota statutes, and that would cover a number of areas around depositing money, investing, bidding projects, bonding projects, those kind of things. And we didn't have any instances of noncompliance, which is great. So, we go through our checklist and verify certain things. And ultimately, again, no instances of noncompliance. So, we'll go to the next page.
Except I don't think we will.
I know. Vicky just ran away.
Another part of the audit is considering the internal control, so how transactions move through the city from a financial perspective. We have one finding that's very common in most of the small cities we work with, and it relates to the preparation of financial statements. We aren't part of your internal control, but we do prepare your financial statements. It's perfectly acceptable, but again, it is a lack of segregation of duties. Basically, you have one person that's really responsible for giving us the information and reviewing the financial statements. There's a number of disclosures and things that are very technical, so most cities just accept that finding. So, again, we see that as acceptable. Okay?
Eric is new to the council. This is something that we've always been kind of dinged on, if you will, every year that I've been here and perhaps every year that Brent's been here. So, it doesn't really rattle me. It's how it is.
Yeah, and every year, the standards get more and more complex, so the idea that maybe sometime you can overcome it, it's probably one that you just want to accept, particularly in some of the disclosures that get really nitpicky. You know, that's where we spend a lot of our time. Okay, now, looking at the numbers, we have the general fund summarized up above. Key things here are that we're relating fund balance to the following year's budget. So, that orange line is your budget, and you can see we have the 2023 numbers presented. That's the 3.3 million. The yellow line is your unrestricted fund balance that you have. You can see that's generally been around 50%, and it dropped down to 40, but hits right on your target. So, your target has always been to keep 40% of your fund balance in the following year's budget and fund balance. So, again, that drop only puts you to what your target working capital threshold is. I think it's important to remember that in the past, you would transfer out any excess you had above that 50% to capital funds. So, this year with the decrease, you still are a target, but it doesn't provide any excess funds that you'd transfer out. Okay, next page. And this is a summary of general fund revenue and expenditures compared with budget. I mentioned that fund balance decreased, so that's the 122,470 decrease from the prior year. Fund balance is still about $1,004,000. You can see revenue and expenditures as a percentage weren't that far off of budget. Revenue was $87,000 under budget, basically due to license and permits falling under what had been planned through budget. Your expenditures in total were $25,000 off, not significant relative to the size of the budget. And there were a number of, there isn't one thing that necessarily caused that. There were a lot of departments that were really close overall. Okay, next page. Little bit of history of revenue and expenditures. You can see revenues on the left, and we categorize that by broad categories, taxes, license and permits, intergovernmental and others. So, there's a number of accounts that are in there, but those are the typical groupings. You can see the taxes total decreased slightly from the prior year. License and permits reflects what I had said before, that that had gone down compared to prior year. And then intergovernmental is less than it was three years ago, but that's when you received your ARPA money and the COVID aids. On the expenditure side, general government has trended up. No one area in general government really contributed to that increase, just overall. Public safety down over the last three years. I think we talked about that in your police calls. Or your police coverage has been less than what was originally planned in budget. And then public works trending up for those three years as well. And then the other, you had capital spend in the general fund that didn't necessarily occur in 2022. Okay, next page. I'll be quick on this one. There's not much to say. Your special revenue funds total about $71,000. These are set up for projects that, or for funds that have usually one specific purpose. You can see cemetery, park and ride transit, leftover ARPA funds, and then the facade loan EDA. So, again, no deficits and adequate fund balance. So, we'll go to the next page.
Can you just try the clicker and see if it'll change?
Well, it's on a PDF, so I'm not sure. Am I doing that or are you? That must be. I can't really control it, though.
Okay, we'll go back to, let's see.
You can go to, okay, yep, there's good. Capital projects fund, now, a little tinier font here, but the biggest one is park development, $1.6 million of fund balance at the end of the year. Couple of funds that have a slight deficit, really in advance of receiving the funding for each of those funds. Overall, the dollars in capital projects funds are about 3.2 million. And again, they'll fund the capital activity of each of those funds. Okay, next page. The debt service funds of the city, I think the graph highlights, based on what you have right now for debt, what that looks like over a 10-year period. You can see the paydown, which will happen in 2023. You'll pay off the 2010 GO improvement. So, you have cash and assets that there'll be a little bit left at the end when that's paid off. But you'll be done with any sort of levy that you have related to that. And then the maturity date, you can get a sense for when these bonds come due and will be finally paid off. Okay. Water fund, what we're highlighting here is your operating cash, operating receipts and operating, compared to operating disbursements, and really the bigger categories. So, in the water fund, the orange line represents the charges that you have for related to water. That green line relates to the connection fees. And what we're looking for is a relationship that shows our operating receipts exceed what our operating expenses are, so the cost to run the system. So, if you look at the orange compared to the yellow, you can see operating receipts generate positive cash. And then our connection fees have been fairly substantial for all of the four years presented. And that's resulted in cash above the spend that we've had on debt payments and on operating expenses. And then we can kind of see the effect on the next page with the cash balances over those four-year period. And a few things stand out here. You can see you had a large cash balance in 2021, just about $10 million in the water fund. That dark box represents unspent bond proceeds, so you issued debt and you were holding those to fund the projects. Spend down quite a bit of that in 2022, plus a little bit more of the water reserves that were intended to fund some of the other projects. Again, when you look at that total cash balance and the needs of the fund, you still have a good cash reserve. But again, the importance of, and I know you have scheduled to do long-term plan or continue that process. That's really the important part of looking at your cash balance. What do you plan to spend it on over those next few years? And you have some big things coming. Okay, next page. Oh, I doubled up on that one. Oh, here we go. Sewer fund, little bit different pattern, or same pattern, but a little different magnitude. Our operating receipts are pretty close to our operating expenses, so our charges for service are coming in close to what our spend is in that fund. And then the connection fees are quite a bit less than they would be in the water fund, but still enough to cover the debt payments. So, we have coverage from those two revenue sources of our major sources of expenses. And then cash on the next page. Also mentioned that we had unspent bond proceeds in 2021 that were used in 2022, and cash went down slightly from the prior year. Still well above that minimum target balance. And again, that is a conservative minimum. So, being above that isn't a negative at all. It does provide reserves for future projects and emergency needs. Okay, next page. Stormwater fund, combination of receipts for both connection fees and operating receipts exceed debt and operating expenses. So, again, good patterns in all of your enterprise funds. So, we'll look at the next page. Spent quite a bit of bond proceeds in 2022, cash balance of $645,000. Certainly is less than it was in '19 and '20, but again, you're funding some of the capital expenses of that fund with current cash reserves, too. Okay, next page. So, if we look at everything in total, and this is combining all of the funds of the city, we have about $14 million in cash. And you see a large decrease from 2021. I mentioned the bond proceeds that have been in play. That's really the result of it. So, you just get a sense on how much cash is in the city in total. So, you'd have to look at each individual fund to say good, bad, or otherwise, but looking at trends over time, you can get some sense on how much cash are we working with. Okay, next page. Now, we put together a few of what would be typical key performance indicators, and this is really high level. So, and I know probably through your budget process, yeah, I've seen the budget presentation before. Tax rates are something that you pay attention to. So, this gives you some comparative to other cities in the county and then other cities your size. So, those are referred to as class four cities by the state auditor. And you can see you perform well compared to those peer groups. Okay, next page. So, taxes per capita is one, or tax per capita is another way of looking at taxes, not always the same as tax rates. You can see from a per capita perspective, pretty consistent results over that four-year period. Again, write it about what the averages are for those peer groups that we included in the information. Okay, next page. And then debt, you've had a fair amount of debt issued over the past couple of years, and that certainly will drive up your per capita numbers. You know, when you're on kind of a growth stage, it takes funding to do that. And so, you can see your debt per capita numbers are relatively high compared to the peer groups. Okay, next page. And then this looks at your debt service expenditures as a percent of all of your current expenditures. So, the higher the percentage, again, means more of your spend is going to paid bonds. So, that's why your numbers are higher than the peer groups. It's consistent with the previous graph. And again, that's, it can be sometimes a capacity question, you know, when bond rating agencies go through things. This is one of the things that they look at as well. So, the importance of having a good plan, having a long-term plan in place, paying attention to rates, all of those things are really important, and which you do well. Okay, next page. And then the last one is looking at current expenditures per capita. Again, you look good compared to the peer group averages. Your numbers per capita on a current expenditure basis are less than what we see in other cities in Carver County and class four cities.
I have a question on this chart. So, you changed the colors from all the previous slides, so that messed me up in the beginning. Just a footnote. But, so, I was trying to think about how do I reconcile that? And maybe I need some help with how these, how this was specifically calculated. But as I think about, our expenditures per capita seem lower than our peers. However, our tax rate is pretty similar. Our debt is higher. Why are we, why is our expenditure lower?
Well, those two aren't necessarily related.
Okay. I wanted to know how to think about that.
Yeah. Yeah, the, and current expenditures doesn't include debt.
Okay.
So, that's the biggest reason.
So, that's part of it. Okay. Maybe that's it.
I can think of like a little context for this would be like the city of Chaska and their electric utility is going to add a whole bunch. Even, they'll spend more, but they have additional revenue sources.
Hmm, okay.
So, every city, you know, some might have municipal liquor.
Different thing, different components of expenditure.
Different, the tax base ratio between residential and commercial industrial, all of those might factor into that.
That was one of my questions, was maybe it was that commercial residential piece. Okay.
That always makes a big difference on those things. Like, one of the cities I work with has a super low taxes per capita, but a pretty high expenditures per capita.
Sure, yeah.
So, they generate a lot of, they have higher commercial focus.
Yep.
And so, that contributes a lot more tax dollars.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. That helped me.
Okay. Any questions or any of the detail, more detail that I could provide?
Not for me. Any other questions?
No, it was good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, always enjoyed presenting the case. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, going back to the invoice cloud presentation?
Yeah.
Yes. Good? Are we good?
I'm going to do this.
Yes.
Okay. I love that confidence. I'm going to do this.
Love it. It's been a minute since I've had to present in here, so I apologize. I was like, let's zoom. Okay. All right, so invoice cloud. Invoice cloud is going to be our new payment processor. And when I say that, I mean for credit cards, ACHs, anytime we take in a payment at City Hall or electronically through our website, it's going to be through invoice cloud. Currently, we're using RevTrack. So, let's just, whoops, whoa, it's really fast. So, I kind of put up a comparison here, comparing RevTrack to invoice cloud. So, do payments integrate directly into our software? Currently, no. Would they, like, once we switch to BSN A for RevTrack? No. But invoice cloud, yes. So, you can just see here, you know, I did a lot of investigating, a lot of research on providers. And so, that is how I chose to go with invoice cloud. The customer can view the bill history, multiple months of bill history. They can sign up for paperless. They can link multiple accounts. What I mean by that is, say, somebody is taking care of their mother, their mother's account, as long as they have the information, they just have to use the same sign-in, email and password, and they can link accounts. That's good for business owners, too. Say they have three businesses in the city of Carver, they want to link their business and their personal. They can link those accounts together. They can receive text alerts, your bills do. Oh, okay, click here. They can go and pay it right from their phone. It's really, really neat. You can make miscellaneous, this is what we're going to use for our miscellaneous payments as well, so they can pay for campground sites, liquor licenses, up to a certain dollar amount. You know, if they want to buy one of the history of Carver books, they can come in and we can do that for them. And it's very user-friendly for staff. Right now, to make certain payments, there's a lot of different steps that staff is doing. And then they're also, I just realized this through talking with staff, that they are doing some double entry for in-person and phone payments. So, they're not only entering it into RevTrack, then they're going into the utility billing system and they're entering it in there. And that just seems like it's wasting a lot of time. So, this, like I said, you just enter it into RevTrack and it all syncs right up into what will be our new software. All right, so top 10 reasons why we chose invoice cloud. Again, integration, that is a word you're going to hear a lot about. So, it integrates right into utility billing software, BSN A. And it's well-known, they have over 2,600 municipal and utility clients in all 50 states. They have a 99.9% uptime. They are cloud-based. And so, that means that we don't have to do any updates. Everything is done kind of behind the scenes with no updates or anything that staff has to worry about. And the thing I like about that as well is we're not getting our IT providers involved either. And that's just additional time with them doing updates, you know, and then they bill us or, you know, it's just directly with invoice cloud. Studies have shown that invoice cloud clients have received an average of a 59% increase in e-payments in the first year. So, people are signing up to take care of their utility bills online in the first year, 59%. And they're reducing their online, their phone calls about utility bills or payment-related problems by 40% in the first year as well. There's also enhanced payment options for the customer, which I kind of mentioned on the previous slide. There's the paperless bill option, which we get questions about weekly here at City Hall. And I don't know about you guys, but I absolutely love having paperless bills. And then if I want to have the option to log in and look at it and print it off, fine, but just don't send me paper. And then there's a robust one-time payment system, so if somebody just decides they want to go in and try it, they don't have to sign up and commit to doing it every single month. They can just go in and try it that one month. And then residents are just asking for all of these things. So, it's been a long time coming, I think. And so, I think we're ready to take this next step. So, I did take some screenshots. It's, I apologize, it's a little bit hard to see here. But, so making a payment in RevTrack in person or over the phone would look kind of like the following. So, over on the left-hand side, in RevTrack, right now, what we would have to do is we would have to enter the cost of the, say, utility bill. And then in that little box, we would have to enter the resident's name and account number. And our account numbers are about 12 digits long. And then sometimes spelling people's names, last names, I mean, even my last name is difficult. And so, we're asking these people to repeat, you know, their name over the phone. And so, we're doing that, and then you add it to your card. And then after we get all of this done, we print out a receipt here at City Hall, and we still have to go back and enter that into our utility billing system. So, it's just, you know, what a pain. Making a payment in invoice cloud for a non-registered account, you type in their account number, their last name, which, we're changing, a little teaser, we are going to shorten our account numbers, which will be fantastic. And you hit search invoices, and any open invoice, like, say they're a couple of months behind, because it happens, they'll pop up and then they can decide what they want to pay. I mean, it's just so much easier. And then, not only that, there's going to be multiple different ways that you can make payments. PayPal, Google Pay, Apple Pay. I even heard Venmo might be an option, so. And you can choose to pay the full invoice, you know, pay the minimum, pay other amounts. And while you're checking out, it'll give you the option to enroll in paperless right there and to enroll in auto pay or enroll and pay by text. Once you're finished, you'll get a note that says, here's what you paid. And then if you like, say that was really successful and you really enjoyed that, then you could click there to register, and it would take you less than a minute to register with invoice cloud. So, once you're registered, you can view and pay your current invoice. You can manage your payment methods, so you can have multiple different payment methods in there if you'd like. Enroll in auto pay and paperless and pay by text. You can view your past payments and invoices, and you can view your scheduled payments. We can also have it where, say, somebody has a building permit or something that is due, or like a small deck permit, maybe for like 500 bucks. They can go in here and see their utility bill and that deck permit, and they can pay for both. So. So, for the next steps, we actually sent out information regarding the change in processors to residents in the June newsletter. And I had Brenda Good post on the Facebook what we're going to be continuing to do throughout the year and just letting them know that we're going to be changing payment providers. And to keep on the lookout for around August 1st, we'll be able to have people start signing up. And then the July utility bill will have a note to residents, alerting them that they'll need to sign up for the new service. And then we can have printed materials. The great thing about invoice cloud is I actually have a login to their marketing materials, and I can have all sorts of 11-by-17 printouts or little mailers. So, we're going to have some stuff out at the front counter for people to grab, just kind of informing them, see, it looks like that little box. That's one of their little marketing deals there at the bottom. And the website will be updated with the new payment processor with a goal live date hopefully slated for August 1st. This is going to coincide with our BSN A, so they're going to go live like at the same time. And we are training staff so that they should be able to help. And we are training staff so that they should, they should be able to help customers when they call in and help them navigate through the Invoice Cloud website, so. Any questions or comments on the upcoming changes to the utility billing and miscellaneous payment provider?
Does all of the old billing history port over to this new system?
No, so each, each resident that uses, you know, uses RevTrack currently, will need to set up a new account.
What about the history? Will we need to maintain the old system to look up old history?
So BSN A will carry the, so our accounting and utility billing will port over 10 years of history.
Okay.
Yes, but not online, they won't be able to see any.
And then there was a little picture of a phone on your first slide, so presumably mobile app compatible?
Yes, I believe there is a mobile app, yes, and, you know, text and all sorts of stuff.
So if I sign up for paperless billing of my water bill, how am I gonna get my newsletter?
So, I, I am proposing that, so, anybody who signs up for paperless billing will now have your email address.
Yes.
And I am proposing that we send out those electronically. So I haven't gotten that approved yet by anybody, but that is my idea, is to just
Like it, yeah.
Kind of shoot it out electronically, yeah.
That'd be great, okay. That'd be great, if we do that, that was one of the things that I wrote down, was I know a lot of people look forward to that newsletter, but
Absolutely.
People who have e-billed for, oh, paid already automatically have always questioned.
Yeah.
Yeah. Was this system, did you test out this system? How did we do community garden registration? Did we use this, or was it something else? So we were able to pay online?
So we're currently using RevTrack, so you can, and, and then now we'll be able to do any kind of miscellaneous payments doing this, yep.
Very cool.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Nope. All right. Awesome. Thanks, Lynn.
Absolutely.
Okay, jumping around to item 8.2, which I think gets us back on track, the 2023-2026 Strategic Plan.
Just a little fun fact on Lynn's presentation, so for, sort of like Cliff Clavon there, if anyone remembers who that is. But for many years, residents have been asking, is there a way that I can stop from getting the return envelope from the city? So this would be finally a way, if you did your e-bill, you wouldn't get that return envelope. So kind of able to cause or resolve an issue that's been kind of stopping us for quite a number of years, so.
Let's see where I came from.
So, happy to present the final strategic plan for city council consideration tonight. In your packet, a really well-done final report from Craig Rapp, also a, what we're calling kind of a scorecard that we can use to measure our success and use for quarterly updates with the city council. But my purpose tonight is just to prevent a summary and then provide the council with an opportunity to ask questions or add additional comments to the work that we've done collectively. So, this kind of a view of the process for those that haven't been involved. We started back in March with our SWOT analysis, so that's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And that was done by department heads and members of the city council. And then one of our big first major steps was a presentation of an organizational environmental scan, so we did that at our April 3rd work session. And I think that proved to be really helpful from a staff perspective and hopefully for the council as well, as we were able to provide that in advance of our actual facilitated workshop on the 6th and 7th, to give the council hopefully the resources and information that you needed to be maybe more well-equipped to have some discussions involving the things that are impacting our community. So we went through that over two days. Then in April and May, based on the results and findings of that facilitated workshop, we did some action plan drafting with Craig Rapp, the department heads and myself, presented that draft action plan to the city council on May 15th, and so now, we're at the point where the city council would consider adoption of that final plan, and then an ongoing quarterly update, and that, I think that's, next to kind of creating the plan is easily the most significant part of it. There's many examples, I think, that we've all seen personally and professionally where plans are really easy to put together, and then they either sit there or collect dust in some file cabinet because you just don't follow up on them, you don't have continuous conversations about them, and then at some point, you ask yourself, why did we really even do this? Or what was the point of this action step? And so, when you stop the conversation, you stop a lot of the momentum and as staff and myself specifically, really taking that seriously to make sure that this conversation continues. Doesn't mean the plan won't change as new information becomes available, but our goal is to not let any of these conversation starters and plans slip out of memory and context. I would offer that one of the biggest pieces to the strategic planning process is formulating a new mission statement. I'll focus on what we have rather than what is existing. So with a foundation of community integrity, stewardship and stewardship, we are committed to serving current and future residents, businesses and organizations in the city of Carver. I will pause here if the city council wants to kind of put your own kind of spin or definition on this for the folks that may be watching. Just for, just to kind of lead it off, for me and from speaking on behalf of staff, we feel like this was a more kind of plain language explanation of what our mission at the city is to do, and I think one of the things that at least stands out for me is that it's a focus on current and future, meaning that we have a responsibility to not only the people and the families and the businesses that are here today, but looking out for future generations of investment and families and community organizations, et cetera, which is a tall task. And it's an ongoing task, and so I feel like this better represents, not only in the words, but in the pictures that you see in this slide, kind of where the city wants to be and what our ultimate mission is. You want me to just keep going?
I don't know that I have anything to add to that.
Okay.
You did a great job, I couldn't think, it's great.
So, in line with that, I think one of the things that I think we did really well as a, as a group is we just, we named what those fundamental pieces are, so starting with community, committing F... Did you guys see that, or is that just me? Oh, I just blacked out for a second. "We are committed to efforts that foster housing choice, promote business development and encourage a sense of pride and spirit in the city of Carver." I think some of those are self-evident, one of the things that, as a group, we really narrowed in on is this encouraging a sense of pride and spirit in the city of Carver, understanding that for the, for a lot of members in the community, Carver is not a hometown, it's more of a small town, and so what can we do to encourage that sense of pride in making Carver their hometown? I was just remarking to some family over the weekend that, you know, in 2000, Carver was 1,200, and so, you know, just over 20 years later, we're almost 6,500. And so, you know, sometimes it's hard enough getting, you know, the members of your family to decide what to, you know, what to eat on a Friday night and think about 6,500 and what to do with the community and what your values are, and so, creating that pride or your values with, whether it's your family or a professional setting is critical, and so, there's the housing choice, there's the business development, but creating that, I'm from Carver, the city of Carver, I'm not from, you know, I'm not, I don't live in Carver County as in like, I live in the city of Chantahassee, and making that distinction. And so whether it's, you know, the local fire department or recognizing someone who, you know, really went above and beyond in the maintenance of their property with the Edith Ann Award, or, you know, the tremendous investment made by Nathan Terraroyce in a business that's creating a whole new energy in downtown. All those things contribute to that community, I would offer the elementary school and, you know, Lions Club and Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts all contribute to that sense, and leading into that and being a partner whenever we can. Integrity, and I think in the world that we live in, this is, you know, especially with like social media and Twitter and kind of real-time reactions to really complex decisions, you know, this is a really important piece that we, you know, deliver the services that people see on a daily basis, like water and public safety and plowing streets. But I think one of the things that I really like about how we define this was managing public processes, because when people come into this council chambers or come into an open house, do they have the faith and trust that they're being delivered information in a respectful, ethical, transparent way where they can participate in a meaningful way in projects and processes and ordinances that impact this community? And to identify that, I think, is a critical part of our mission and what we do on a daily basis. And then finally stewardship, and this gets into that current and future residents, but you can, you can see all these, you know, I would say, almost generational types of projects. Here are expansion of, of housing, the Certified Levy Project, the Downtown Park, are not just things that we're doing for today, but doing things for the future to make things, hopefully, for the folks that are sitting in this room 20 years from now, easier that I'm thankful that that city council and that, with help from staff, thought about that, that hopefully people are not talking about flood insurance 20 years from now. And people, somebody is enjoying a concert in that Downtown Park 20 years from now on a nice summer night. So thinking about those things and our role in investing, sustaining and planning for those assets is critical to that mission. And so breaking that out into the areas I've highlighted, the desired outcomes, indicators and targets, I'll focus on a few of them, our key strategic initiatives are listed in the plan, I didn't get into that, but, you know, I think you can see this woven into even Lynn's presentation on the 2024 budget when we talked about transparency, communicating with the community on our targets, so increasing, increasing our cash ba, cash balance available so that we can reduce our reliance on debt, having stable and consistent rates and charges, demonstrating financial strength, and all those pieces are connecting to that so that we can communicate to people, you know, whether it's on an issue that we all agree with or an issue that's a little bit more complex, that ultimately, financial strength is a role, and sometimes that'll be tested, and sometimes it'll be fairly easy, but having this building block will be essential and kind of growing from here. And the, and the great piece to all of this is, these targets are not just to check the box, it's a, you know, once we get to AA+, you know, at some point we'll want to beat a AAA, AAA minus, or then the full AAA, we probably can't get there yet, just based on the size of our organization, but we're not, just gonna stop once we get to AA+. And this plan transitions the city from a goal-setting document to a strategic plan and targets and measuring data, measuring performance, and this is how it relates to financial strength. Improved operations with the desired outcomes of satisfied employees, meeting core service demands and well-managed operations. I think you can see a lot of this in what we also talked about tonight with our budget, moving from five years to 10 years, but just in the preliminary conversations I've overheard with Chad and Lynn, you know, and Aaron, just talking about like, you know, they're talking about projects that we might need to do 40 years from now when it comes to building maintenance, you know, and that's the type of information that we haven't had, even though we've thought about it, we haven't put it on paper, planned for it, budgeted for it, and even though it might not be in that first, excuse me, tenure list, it'll be on a list, it'll be thought about, so to that point of making things easier and more efficient for the folks that are in here 20 years from now, this helps us get there. A big piece I would also offer is the increase in percentage of employees satisfied from 82 to 85%. For me, that's not just one project that gets that done, that's a series of decisions and leadership opportunities that happen frankly on a daily basis, and so, what do we do to put our employees in a position where they feel valued? And just anecdotally, like, the, the action that the city council took related to Juneteenth, I would say separates ourselves from other communities where at some point they were discussing, should we keep city, city hall closed but not pay folks for a paid holiday? You know, I was very proud and happy to say the city council supported that, it wasn't really even a question. It's a paid holiday, we're gonna move, they did it preemptively, and so I think that sends a different type of message than maybe some other communities have sent. And so, again, more of a journey than a destination, but every, as you look to these targets and indicators and outcomes, it all tells hopefully a story to the community of what the city council wants to see and the leadership that you're gonna provide to help us get to these desired outcomes. Responsive development, I think this is especially important in a community like Carver that's continuing to grow. If you look at the comp plan, we're supposed to be 10,300 in 2030 and just over 19,000 in 2040, and so the, the world and Carver specifically is gonna look a lot different. But you've indicated here what you want for a target, you don't want to just be a community of single-family homes, you want to give people an option for different types of homes at different price points. We're heading towards providing folks with essential retail services so that although you can get plenty of things in Chaska and Chan and Shakopee, et cetera, you want to situate yourself so folks have an opportunity and the option to get those same types of services in Carver, and that they know that they're in Carver and they feel like there's a sense of place which all of these pieces address. Stable infrastructure systems, kind of the, the guts, I think, of what the city does, that reliable infrastructure, we've all can probably think of situations where that has been tested, and so, how can we pivot and plan based on those experiences? Limiting the number of service disruptions, limiting the number of retrofits, adding amenities to our park systems. I think this, we want to, it's one of these things where I almost want people to take that for granted, that like the water will turn on, the sewer will go down, that the parks are available and well-maintained, that I can cross streets and get to trails and sidewalks without having to navigate a busy shoulder of a, of a street and feel safe. These are all pieces that get us to that point, and so they're put through, through our budget, through our policies, through the ordinances that the city council considers and adopts. And then finally, excuse me, focused communications, especially in the world that we live in today, this kind of weaves its way through every one of these topics that we previously discussed, that we need to inform, engage and make sure that our community is satisfied with the services that we're providing and how we're, how we're providing them. And so, the targets and the outcome indicators here are representations of trying to hit that goal, trying to hit that 85% of people recommending Carver, increasing the number of participants that we have at city events, whether it's council meetings, whether it's open houses, other engagements, the Parks Group, the Parks Advisory Group, that's just starting up, creating that relationship in a, you know, we've, we've come to have formal relationships with residents and community members, want to create that informal so that they feel comfortable enough reaching out to us even when they don't maybe have their question formulated or know what solution they need, but we can help them get there, and that comes through getting to those desired outcomes. So, this finishing up on the slide that started it, so finishing and starting with the mission. So again, in your packets is the full report along with the action plan scorecard. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Yeah. Okay, so in the packet besides the PowerPoint, there was that upfront document that was the strategic plan. I noticed that there were some targets listed on that document that were not in your PowerPoint, was your PowerPoint kind of summary, high level?
Correct.
Okay, got it, but that is the full list of targets?
Correct.
Got it, okay. I really like the, the single-family or non-single-family housing unit percentage increase, it's fantastic, going from 14 to 25, I really like that. A question about under improvement... Um, a question about im- under improved operations, the target there around the core service performance levels. Um, have we defined what those are yet?
We have not. That's, we're starting to, so I just in the last week, I got some information from the sheriff's office related to that. I'm still working with Chief Trimble on the fire department side, but um, there are some of these uh, that one included, we'll have to develop. I would also uh, say that we'll be able to use. So we're planning a, an, a twenty twenty four community survey. So an update from the last one that you previously did. So that again, will probably add some additional context to, to some of these action plan items. And allow us to start measuring some of these critical functions that you wanna s- see how we're doing. So it
Okay.
To your point, it's a really good question. It's a, it's a work in progress where some of these we don't, we literally don't have the data to understand where we're starting from. And so first step is identifying the data and then measuring, measuring it and then saying, okay, we wanna go from here to there.
Yep. Okay. My final question is around sort of the quarterly updates, right, that you plan to give. So that, there's a a final document at the end that kind of lists out, okay, to each, for each item, here's our targets, but then here's our strategic initiatives and who's gonna work on that? Is this what we're pr- you're planning to provide quarterly updates on, those initiatives and activities or is it the targets? What do you kind of think?
It would say it's gonna be all the above and it's gonna be um, depend- depending upon who you see as the lead, it's gonna be less of me and more of, so if it's fi- if it's finance related, you're gonna hear from Lynn. If it's uh, responsive development related, it's, you're gonna hear from Aaron, Chad, Vicky, et cetera. And part of it too is if you're, if you're not hearing what you wanna hear, if you're not getting the data that you think is uh, ca- specifically connected to that, it's a, it's an opportunity for us to check in on conversation and expectations. But you know, another kind of wrinkle to this is, you know, we have goals that are like more year goals where the last plan has been more like summer of twenty twenty four and spring of twenty six. And so uh, again, this is more of a long view. It's just a different way to think about it. Um, but to that point, that's where we're starting. If you want this to be different or look different or hear different progress reports, we wanna be adaptable to what you need in order for you to feel like you can be successful. Cause when we get into those budget workshops, we wanna ha- have you think, I forgot if, who asked about it, but like if you could see um, how this relates to the strategic plan, like that kind of feedback is, is really good for us to be thinking about that. And then, you know, we can do the same thing with ordinances and policies that you might look at and say like, how does this relate to the strategic plan? Is there any guidance there so that it's not just, well, this is the time of the year. We talk about the strategic plan. It becomes, I'm gonna use a bunch of like business jargon, but it's like, you know, very critical and it synchronizes up with all of our operations so that it's, it becomes less jargon and more just kind of how we talk about
Yep.
planning and being mindful and having meaningful discussions related to strategic planning.
Okay, sounds good.
We're gonna say it's evergreen.
I don't, yeah. Pine or spruce or?
Spruce.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Eric, you want to go next? Sorry.
So, you know, I don't have any specific questions and I think that's just having been part of the process. Uh, the commentary would be the, and uh, Joy mentioned this too, the expanded uh, housing. The lifecycle housing in Carver is really important to me. So going to fourteen to twenty five percent is important to me. I think that the objectives and KPIs are not all easy, but they're realistic and obtainable. And that's kind of the most important thing. We didn't put something out here that is so far a stretch goal that we don't think we'll get there. Uh, I think that moving to ten year planning is uh, the right path forward, but beyond that, and you talked about this. Planning beyond tenure and lifetime is kind of where we need to be in the city now is with the rate of our growth. That's it.
I very much like this. We all worked very hard on it and I think this is a great summary. It's a great plan. Um, there's only one detail and it's a very minor detail, but when we're talking about the focused communication um, and increase the number of participants at city events by ten percent, the word events for me, and this may be just my brain, but I would have liked, oh, we're gonna like park and rent kind of things and, and stuff that's happening in the park. But, but when you read about what that means that, and I shouldn't say when you read about what that means, when it re- when you explain to us oh, this is council meetings and it says, I think it's, events may not be the correct word to cover that. Maybe it's city functions, maybe it's something else. I'd maybe you have a better word or somebody else's, but when I hear events, to me that is more like steamboat days, the vehicle fair, that kind of stuff. And I think this goes far beyond that.
Well, we, so we, it was originally when we first met with Craig, it was meetings. We changed it as a staff to events. So we presented that. So I wouldn't count steamboat days in it, but I would count the vehicle fair. I would count the Parks Advisory Group. I would count other recreational pieces because those are all touch points. I would count a um, you know, when we had Michael Ku- from Shippel come in, or if we had, if Dick Jorgensen did a, you know, uh, you know, deck permitting piece. So all those connections points, we wouldn't count like the, you know, anything to do with like elections, but when someone is purposely connecting with the city um, in a physical way outside of like emails, that I think we wanna track that, get the baseline number for twenty twenty four and then see how we're doing on a year to year basis. If we, if we have a thousand connection points in twenty twenty four and then for whatever reason, we have seven hundred in twenty twenty five, I'd wanna find out what caused that. Are we having less events? Are we not getting the word out in a other meaningful way? So um, I defer to the council of events or, or I forgot what the other word you said was.
Fun- I said functions, something along that line. I'm not in, I'm not indicating that steamboat days would be a same function. We know that. I'm saying when I hear the word event, that leads me to something else. It doesn't lead me to think these touch points that you just mentioned. So maybe there's a better word than events. I mean, cause we're gonna carry this through and I think if we even change it to participation at city functions or city, or maybe it needs a couple of words just to explain what we're really getting at. Cause to me, the word, just the word events doesn't get what we're, what we're focusing on.
I don't know. I read it and events didn't jump out. I don't have a good answer.
Does our attorney have another word for events?
Somebody who's the worst is on their computer thing.
I, I was thinking public engagement opportunities. I mean, that to me spans the whole
Ooh, I like that.
Meetings all the way down to public vehicle fairs or whatever else. I mean, that's my thought.
I would, I would be more inclined to go with that.
Just like engagements? Sure.
I don't hate that. I know we worked really hard in the portion that we were involved with, with using specific words for specific reasons. And I don't, you know, if you guys went through a similar process, I don't wanna change it if that's something that you put thought into. Um, it took time on, but you'd have to let me know.
But this is also the council for us to go through and look at what staff's work is.
But I'm allowed to ask a question.
You are? I didn't realize there was a question. I thought it was a statement.
No, I asked. Was it a purposeful?
Uh, I'm, we're not like, we didn't lose any like sleep on like picking it.
Okay.
I would say like, and like editorial, for me, it means like the same things. Like we're monitoring it. So if you think it's like a, like the public won't understand it, but from a staff perspective, events or public engagement, events or functions is a horse a piece, but we defer to the council on how you want it represented.
I think simple language is best. Uh, I'm fine with events, uh, just because it's plain language. I think we run amok if we make it too complicated.
I think adding a couple more words doesn't make it too complicated, but we also have to think that this plan is supposed to go for another couple of years. There may be some of us who are, aren't sitting here in another couple of years. So and same for staff, you know, people move on sometimes. So does this mean the same two years from now as it means today, if we look at events? If, if everyone else in the council thinks that is explanation enough, we can stick with it, but I prefer, you know, a little bit outside of events. Say it again, Dave.
Uh, public engagement or public engagement opportunities?
I prefer public engages.
I'm not hearing a strong.
Perfect.
Something I don't have. Changing it. Okay.
And I do not have anything else.
Okay. Um, for me, this is different, right? This is different than anything that we have done in the last five times that I've been involved in this cycle. Um, and I think it's great. This seems to have, I think it's the metrics and numbers that we're following, this seems to have more teeth to it. Um, and being able to check it out and check back in and see kind of the progress we're making. Um, I also think we've got some bold goals in here. It wasn't the like, let's grab the low hanging fruit, like, well, let's make it something that we know we can get. And so I think like in a really dorky way, that's kind of exciting. Like let's charge ahead and let's aim really, really high and see what we can get and how this will turn out. So I think that this is great. I think it's a really good representation of the portion of it that we went through certainly when we're all sitting here in April. Um, and I love the work that's been put on it. I'd also love how I often respectfully refer to you all as the worker bees, but I really appreciate that this was more collaborative and kind of the work elements of this was done by the people who know your business the best. So I like it. Um, do we need to, you know what, we're behind in a few things and I will blame. Um, I think, do we need to make a motion to approve this? Okay. Um, I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty three through twenty twenty six strategic plan.
A second.
Um, motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve the same sign? Motion passes. All right. Um, sorry, I just saw we needed to approve the audit. And I don't think we did that.
Nope, we did not.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty two audited financial statements.
I'll second.
Uh, we've got a motion by uh, council member Mock and a second by council mem- council member Pershman. Um, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve the same sign? Motion passes. All right. Um, is there anything else that I skipped over? Um, okay, I think up next is our carryover conversation from the work session where we were to start talking about um, cannabinoids.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Are we able to?
Yeah, I think I can.
Bring, um, there's just two slides left.
Dave, do you mind just giving a super quick summary for folks who are just watching this meeting of what we've talked about previously?
Sure, Mayor. Um, so at the work session, we talked about um, at a very high level, the new uh, cannabis legislation that Governor Walz signed last week. And um, some of the next steps in terms of what cities should expect um, as it relates to the state office of cannabis management, which will be created and will start licensing cannabis businesses over the course of the next uh, year and change. Um, and the council also discussed its ability and its authority to uh, adopt an interim ordinance on these new businesses while the city can have some time to determine um, the extent of regulation zoning requirements. Um, and what's next? And a lot of that's going to as we talked about, take time, not only because this is brand new to Minnesota and to the city, of course, but also because um, the rules aren't even established by the state yet and we don't expect those for many months. Um, along with the fact that um, these businesses and the model ordinances that the state is charged with providing to cities is also not available yet and again, won't be available for many months. And so um, the plan is that staff is going to prepare for a public hearing at the July uh, council meeting. And uh, we'll have that interim ordinance uh, presented to the council for your consideration. And then we can uh, talk about that more uh, that eve- evening and staff will certainly be working toward that um, over the course of the next few weeks. Um, and so unless there's any other questions or anything I missed there, I'm happy to move into the next um, issue that I wanted to talk about. And that's with these THC edibles, which again, these were legalized last year uh, in twenty twenty two. The, under this new bill, there are a handful of immediate changes to that statute that uh, did legalize those products. Uh, specifically the changes allow these edibles to be sold at exclusive liquor stores. They can be sold for onsite consumption at locations with on sale liquor licenses under state law. And um, there's some other regulations with regard to display and packaging, labeling, testing um, that are uh, lengthy and outlined in the, in the new legislation. And it's, it's interesting because the way the legislature teed this up is that statute that was adopted last year in twenty ti- twenty twenty two has a sunset clause now and it's going to be repealed uh, as of March first, twenty twenty five, after which that category of products or these lower level THC products will be treated under the new statute as uh, the, the term is lower potency hemp edibles. Um, they will require OCM licensure, uh, but they fall outside of the city's authority under this new interim ordinance that is allowed uh, under state law. And so that's where there's a lot of confusion because uh, and I assume the reason for that is because they've been legalized for um, you know, approximately a year now and maybe the legislature didn't think it made sense to give this authority to cities, considering cities technically already had inability to um, adopt an interim ordinance for these products. And if you can go to the next slide, please, Vicky? So um, some cities like Carver chose not to adopt a moratorium and did not impose any licensing requirements. Uh, but it's not too late to do that if there's any desire to at this point. Um, there are some cities that are just now adopting a one year uh, moratorium on these products. And you know, it doesn't mean you have to do it. I think the point is, is that when we're, as we start to think about zoning regulations for cannabis businesses and just overall businesses that sell um, THC, it sort of makes sense to, or could to the council make sense to maintain that status quo. So we can unroll or unveil, if you will, a new set of regulations for all these at once. Um, that doesn't mean you have to do it, but the one thing I'll say is that these products could theoretically be sold anywhere um, as of last week, including the new sorts of establishments that we talked about, gas stations, um, liquor stores, other retail um, establishments. And they are the lower level products. And so maybe that's not a concern, but um, cities cannot create that cap like we talked about with the other products with these products. Um, I'm sorry, you can do that. So eventually you might decide you only want a certain amount of retail establishments in your city selling these low level products. And when you decide that, there might be fifteen of them or twenty of them. And that's not to say a lot of them aren't going to start selling the products in the next week or two weeks or month. Um, and candidly, they probably have started doing it even in the last week since the, the law changed last week. Um, but there could be something uh, to be said about the planning process and the council deciding to sort of push pause, at least to the extent we can right away for everything, um, just to allow that planning process to kind of play out. And um, with this interim ordinance, there's no reason to wait till July. If you wanted to do it, we could do it, you know, at the June, the next June meeting. We could do it with the other one uh, in July, or we don't need to do it at all. And I'm, I'm only revisiting it because I think some cities were thinking these products would be sort of grouped in with all the new cannabis products that are now allowed. The legislature really didn't do that. Um, they created this very odd and awkward transition period for these products. And um, you know, it's anticipated that they're really gonna be rolled out in, you know, many different types of establishments. Um, now that there's some more clarity on where they can be sold and when they can be sold. Um, and I should say the only real requirement for these businesses, at least until licensing starts in sometime in twenty twenty four, maybe later, is that they register with the state of Minnesota by October first of this year. That's it. Um, that's all they have to do um, beyond, you know, following the, the new rules around testing and those things. But um, you know, it's, it's entirely up to the council. I, I think it's a really a I think it's a really a policy decision, just like what we talked about a year ago. And if there's no desire to incorporate or adopt a moratorium on them, that's fine. But if the city council does have any desire to, again, try to limit the extent and availability of these products for a period of time and maybe the availability of them from growing significantly, which may or may not happen, it can do that. And again, we would be able to bring that to the council, should you want something, as soon as that next meeting. But that's up to you. So I'm happy to answer questions, but that's kind of a quick overview of what that interim ordinance might look like. And hopefully I, I did a good job of articulating why it has to be sort of treated separately from the other one. And it's because the interim ordinance related to cannabis businesses and the new law uses the term cannabis businesses and these low level THC products are expressly outside of that definition. So they're looked at a little differently by the legislature.
Vicki, can you back the slide up just one? So I will start on this one and what will surprise no one in this room. I think we should have a moratorium on this. It just seems like a time where we can kind of figure out what we want to do as far as zoning regulations. I still think that this is a genie that's going to be really hard to put back into the lamp if we wait and figure out what we want to do with cannabis products. It just seems like a good time to really evaluate where we want these to be able to be sold in our community and how frequently we want to run into them when we're in a retail environment.
I have a question about, you mentioned businesses going out now and kind of rushing to put these on their shelves. What happens to those businesses after a moratorium is executed?
There's nothing we can do about it. So if they have established as a business selling these products, we can't tell them, we changed the rules on them and now they have to stop selling them. So it would only be looking forward. It would be really a forward-looking moratorium to try to limit the, you know, significant expansion or availability of the products in different retailers. But the ones that have already established, they're.
Well, let me ask a different question. And what constitutes established?
If they're selling the products at this point in time.
So, yep, I've already got this, we've already sold it, can't stop me.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, whenever you're enforcing a zoning regulation against a business, all the city has to do is prove that they're violating what the law says. It's, the burden of proof is on them to prove to us that they established as selling the products prior to when the law was implemented. So, I mean, I would, it wouldn't be that difficult for them. I think they could probably provide receipts and, you know, wholesale records and transactions and things that prove that they were established. But I know there are some businesses in this community, candidly, that are selling these low level products already and I don't think anyone would question that. But there might be other ones that are, you know, later to the, to the game that it would be a different story. We wouldn't know when they started or when they didn't start.
So my feeling on this is I'm not proposing that we put a moratorium on an established business that had, that had the express purpose of selling these and we've, we've already gone through that. We have one established business in the community, but I think it makes a lot of sense to give us time to consider the rules and regulations. I have real concerns about testing, production and distribution. I don't think those are sorted out yet, so I would welcome an opportunity for this to sort out, not only at the state level, but to give us time to consider that as well.
Okay, I'm still so confused about what a moratorium would change in our community. Right, so does that, if we put in a moratorium, does that mean that Harveys can't sell it?
It would if they haven't started selling it already.
But it's legal right now?
Mm-hmm. According to the, yes, the legislature has made it legal, so they could be selling already. And maybe they are. Or a liquor store in the city could theoretically be selling it as of right now.
Right.
And so if a moratorium were to take effect as of the date of that moratorium going, taking effect moving forward, you couldn't start selling if you haven't already started selling as a business.
So then what happens when the state comes out with some additional licensing guidance and things like that? And it's still legal for a liquor store to sell these low level potency items? Our moratorium is still, is that meaningless, right?
Well, it, it wouldn't be because we still have that year to get some zoning regulations in place. I wouldn't suggest that the city license these businesses because the state's going to license them. And so it doesn't make sense to license them until the end of March or the end of February of 2025.
Right.
So that wouldn't make sense, but it does, you know, theoretically make some sense to say, if you're going to sell these THC edibles, you know, we'd prefer you to be in this business district and we'd prefer you to be X amount of feet away from maybe some places where, you know, that, that could certainly be something the council wants. And so even when the state starts licensing them, they would still have to, they would still have to comply with all of the city's zoning regulations. If we had a moratorium in place, they couldn't establish yet. If we repealed the moratorium and implemented some, you know, zoning regulations, then we would have to make sure that they complied with those and they couldn't get their license from the state unless and until they do comply with those, location wise, you know, that, that kind of a thing, so.
So again, I guess I'm struggling with what is the real impact in the community. Maybe I'm getting too far ahead thinking about zoning ordinances, but I think about the store and bar or, you know, where, where those facilities can be. Would we make that different for alcohol versus edibles?
It's a good question and maybe not, but maybe there are other retail establishments, gas stations or, you know, other things that, and those are locations maybe where you wouldn't want them. So I'm not saying there wouldn't be places that you don't want them to establish right now potentially because you don't, haven't thought through it, that will be prohibited in the future from selling them. Maybe they still will be, but at least it would give the city more control to think through that. And you raise a lot of good, I think, points and valid policy concerns. And I've, I think I've heard from this council before on this. I think there's arguments on both sides of the coin when it comes to policy and what you may or may not want to do. I just didn't want to ignore the fact that that option is still available and some cities are saying, we really expected the state to be a little more hands-on and clear about these products that were legalized last year in a very awkward way. We didn't really see that clarity, at least immediately, and now we're sitting here still trying to think about what to do. And it could make sense to say, let's just hold off on doing anything until we think through it, but.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that, right? All this stuff is changing, right? So now there's a new way that the state is looking at edibles, right? So we should consider that. My perception here is that the state is almost equating like 3-2 beer with these low level. And so if we're going, if the state is looking at that way and we allow 3-2 beer to be sold at QuickTrip, I wouldn't allow cannabis to be sold at QuickTrip. So I'm not sure, I'm sensing huge value in putting a moratorium unless somebody has some further ideas about what we really think we would do from a ordinance perspective. Would we change? Would we change?
Can I, I have a time, a moment to speak?
Please, Alex, please.
So I'm glad that you brought this forward. These laws are changing, so I think it's definitely worth us taking another look at. When we're talking about these low level ones, I do like what you said about what, what does this change in the endpoint? If it's going to become right, coming right back? And when we look at the, the business that we have established right now, and then now you could buy it at, let's say Casey's or you could buy it at Harveys. These are also, I mean, you can sell liquor at Harveys. So why, I mean, the edible part of it, it makes, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, say, but you can have this, you can have this mind altering substance, but you can't have this one that's already been legalized because they are both technically legal. And if you are able to buy it at one of these places, I mean, what is the difference if you walk to Casey's or you go to QuickTrip or you go to Harveys or you go to the store that says, this is our store? And then, you know, we've talked about areas and this is somewhat in the future. When we look at areas that we may or may not want these businesses to be, I mean, we have a daycare across the street from what is our legal shop right now and there has not been any issues between those two uses in the downtown. I do think that being at March 1st, if I understood you correctly, so March 1st, this all kind of rolls back into one thing or this will always be separate?
So the, the statute that 151, seven, or 151, 72 is the statute that allows these edibles. That is going to be repealed on March 1st of 25. However, all these products fall under this other definition in the new law of lower potency hemp edibles. And once a business gets a state license to sell those products, they're now operating under the new statute. They're not operating under 151 anymore. And so I think they just said March 1st to 25 because that will certainly give the state enough time to, to get this process done and, and licenses issued. I don't know why they picked that date, but the expectation is that any business selling these products that wants to continue selling them will have a state license well before March 1st of 2025. And if they don't, they're going to have a problem because that's when the ability to sell will go away under the old statute and they have to be licensed under the new statute. And again, this, again, it's a very convoluted transition period, but that's the way they, they set this up.
So I myself am, don't think that we're going to be solving anything with this additional look at a moratorium. Again, if you can buy them here, if they're legal, you can buy them at a, at a liquor store, at, at a 3-2 gas station. There's really no difference to me in that and I don't think we're solving anything except kind of backtracking on something that the council has already, had already decided against because now we've got another opportunity to go after it from a different angle. And knowing that March 1, anything of these will roll into and be lumped in with whatever the overarching state legislature reg, or regulations are, is enough for me to go forward. I don't have any appetite to, to start re-regulating. What we've already said is okay by not going with a moratorium on these edible products in town.
Dave, when 151.72 gets repealed, will these be sold for the same, does the same tax revenue structure apply then to these items?
It's a good question. I think so. I mean, I think they're going to fall under the new statute. So all the sales tax, the 10% sales tax, I think will apply. Can't remember for sure if the 10% tax and how it goes into that state, those state funds, if that is imposed on every single product that will be licensed or if it's just the cannabis business ones. But I want to say everything will have that tax.
Okay.
Because it's the state and they will tax everything they can if they have a chance.
Your words.
But it's very true.
Right, he's not wrong. Will it also figure into the one for every 12,500?
Nope. No, that's only for cannabis businesses, which again is all the dispensary retailers. The, the businesses that are selling the stuff that I think is going to cause the sale of these edibles to dwindle pretty quickly. I think the, the common anticipation at this point, most people think once the, the retail businesses start to get, once they start to operate, people aren't going to want to go to a tobacco shop to buy these edibles because they're going to have all these different things that they can get now that are, you know, it's like 3-2 versus all the other alcohol. I mean, it's the same idea. And I just think the demand for these products is going to go way down as soon as that happens, but I could be wrong. I just, you know. That's, that's the anticipated outcome of this new law, so.
Thank you. To answer your question about what I think will change, I think, I talked to Abby this afternoon from Children of Tomorrow and they have some really real concerns about what is, what is potentially going to be sold within their vicinity as far as cannabinoids and cannabis products. And so for me, it's figuring out what zoning changes we want to make or what kind of guardrails we want to put up as far as where these can be sold. And I think that this is the time, since we're kind of pressing pause for the cannabis products, I think that it's a good time to be able to put cannabis. But you know this, you've heard me. Yeah, and I, and I heard you say that, but you know, across from Children of Tomorrow is a restaurant where we're giving them a full liquor license for intoxicating. Just to prove that our consent has jumped up. So that is right across the street. We didn't talk about the topic of liquor licenses. She expressed her concerns about the cannabis, cannabis and cannabinoids products. Okay, I just don't see a difference, so. But you asked like what? But yeah, I, you helped me kind of, you know, see potentially what it could be. I just, I, I don't think that, so if we put in a moratorium and we looked at our ordinances, I would not support an ordinance that is really separating liquor licenses from edibles, right? In the zoning perspective, or allow liquor licenses to be obtained in certain areas or certain zones. I would support allowing edibles to be in that same kind of building. So that looks like it is a 2-2 split with one member absent tonight, so I am not sure the best way to. Yes, Brent, I bet you know.
Yeah, so you're not, the council's not voting on this. It's just a matter of, do you want to see it on your agenda?
I, I, yeah, thank you, I understand that. I'm just thinking of, do we want to see on it, see it on our agenda? We don't know, we are split. So I guess it wouldn't hurt to see it on an agenda the next meeting.
Just one more question. Same rules apply here. We could repeal this if we chose to, correct?
Before the year expires, yes.
Okay, so I, I don't want to continue too much deliberation here, but the ambiguity in and of itself concerns me. I don't know that anything that came out in the last few days clarified, well, provided a lot of clarity. That may happen in the weeks and months to come, but if we didn't put the moratorium in place, then we would be precluded from any action. I, I don't, I really have trouble understanding how this, how that action hurts the city, hurts the existing retailer. And again, we have the ability to repeal if we should decide that we've become more subject matter experts on this and it's a good idea to repeal it.
Mayor, just one more clarification, just following your rules for setting agenda items, that a 2-2 would be a fail if, you know, when you follow council requests. It's, it's a majority and so if you don't have a majority, it wouldn't be on the agenda. And you can broach it again at the next council request to put it on, but a, a 2-2 would be a tie under any, or a 2-2 under any issue would be a fail unless you got a majority.
Okay, so I think we'll probably discuss this again. Okay, um, thank you. Alright, moving on, communications, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, just let me, can you stop while you're in that? I'm going to share my screen here. So I have a number of updates, so these are kind of teasers. Fix that spelling error, that's a lot of.
I think we could have lived.
I don't know. Erica might be watching, so.
I don't think she's watching.
That's true, very true. So the first two, I'm going to toss over to Aaron Smith.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. So the first one is the Brookview Trail connection. If you remember the Brookview development just south of Meadows at Spring Creek, we talked about through the development process, Nature Based Trail from the private street, Brookview Court, down to Snake Trail. from the private street, Brookview Court, down to Snake Trail, making a rustic trail section connecting that cul-de-sac down to our greater trail system. A couple of weeks ago, Chad, Aaron Schmidt, Michael Jabs, Kurt Manley and I trapeze'd the site. We looked like mountain goats trying to find a spot, like, we would just come like shooting out of the hill and we'd be like, oh, there you are. There, you ran down that hill. We couldn't find a natural trail that worked. We tried pretty hard. We were out there with 5,000 mosquitoes all at once. So right now, we don't see a literal path forward for a trail in that location, but someday in the future, we think it might be a good spot for maybe a stair system. So if you could build trail stairs into the hill to get up into the development, we think that would be a good option. Not something that we have on our to-do list right now, not something we're planning on funding, but just wanted to give you an update that. We tried pretty hard to find that trail and it was so steep that it would either wash out and be eroded probably year one, and it wouldn't be safe just based on what we saw. So we're keeping it open that maybe in 10 years, when it's different people in the room, someone will feel really passionately about a stair project, and that would be a good spot for it. So we'll continue to own that outlot, just won't have a trail section connecting Brookview to Snake Trail.
And we can put stairs in there? There's no accessibility concerns?
We could, well, it just, it wouldn't be an ADA accessible trail system, which we wouldn't be required to do.
You just can't get grant funding. You have to pay for it yourself, basically.
Right. And for, just for your reference, we did not collect park dedication money for that project, so there's no exchange of money back and forth, so.
Just clarify, just on that specific trail, we collected park dedication for the project.
Yes, we took cash in lieu of land or improvement, so nothing for that trail specifically.
The development.
Correct. Two? Okay, so two is very broad, zoning ordinance clarification. We have observed and heard a little bit about some people who have chicken coops in town, and they are permitted in a really tiny portion of Carver right now. It's the area just east of High Street on Kirchi Hill Drive and Diedrich. It's the residential unsued district, which Eric probably knows a lot about from our last planning commission meeting. It's a zone that shouldn't exist anymore because everyone is connected to City Sewer.
Did you say unsued?
Correct, many years ago.
But is now sewored.
Correct, yep. We would never zone a property that right now because you have to connect to city utilities, so it doesn't make a ton of sense. That is the only area right now where chickens are allowed, but we know that they exist in other places in the community. So we want to see your thoughts on chickens, communities across the metro. It was kind of a, a big craze a couple of years ago, so I think we could find some.
Didn't we talk about having an ordinance?
We did have one. I wrote it back in the day, so it disappeared over time.
No, but recently, didn't we talk about potentially putting an ordinance on that?
We did, yep. Yeah, so we wouldn't be the first community to do it, so we'd have a lot of people to look to, some expertise. Not something that I think would be overly challenging, just based on some things that I think we know, like roosters probably shouldn't be in residential districts because they can get a little bit obnoxious. So just wanting to take a pulse on the group for chicken coops, any guidance would be appreciated.
There are a lot of cities who allow this. I know back from when I researched it, so it'll be easy, and you know this already, I'm sure you've looked at it. Easy to find, great ordinances that come from other places. I am all for, if people want backyard chickens, obviously no roosters, fantastic, have at it. Get your eggs, I don't care.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with chickens, but I think we do need to be, no roosters.
Yeah, and that's what most of the ordinances are very clear about, how many chickens have.
Yeah, and that's the, the, one of the funny things about our current ordinance is that it allows for one animal equivalent. So in that tiny district, you could have a horse, a cow, a pig, a sheep, one goat, 25 chickens or 25 rabbits.
Now wait, do we need to put a moratorium so that nobody gets a horse overnight?
I think your word about clarification is important there.
Right, so Courtney, your neighborhood might have some horses starting tomorrow.
I'm getting a horse tonight.
Okay, then.
Okay, so we're going to move forward, I think, for process, start researching, and I'll have to go through the planning commission, but we'll come to this group.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
On utility bill late fees, if you recall, when the city council adopted the fee schedule for 2023, we discussed briefly the possibility of in the future maybe switching over to a percentage-based utility fee rather than a flat fee. Well, that, we were planning to address that with the council for the 2024 fee schedule, but in the conversion process to BSNA, you know, we're going to be faced, or we'd ask the council to consider at an upcoming meeting where you want to land on that. We do think that there's some inequities built into the late fee system with a flat fee. For example, if someone has a balance of $10 and they get, all of a sudden, they, they pay late, they get a $10 late fee. And similarly, if you have someone who owes $500 and they get a $10 late fee, typically, at least in the industry, you don't see a lot of folks with flat fees. You can see it, but we think the more equitable, equitable way is to do percentage. We don't need you to decide tonight, but if you had preliminary feedback, we could, you know, tailor our memo and action towards that. If you, if you said this straight away, we want the flat fee, then we don't, you know, we don't really need to bring it for consideration, and we'll implement it in that way. But just with the conversion over to the new utility billing software, it's in our best interest for time and cost, frankly, to do that on the head end rather than having them implement and then deciding to change it six months from now. So if there's any preliminary feedback on that from the council, it'd be appreciated.
Percentage sounds fine, I don't.
Percentage seems fair.
Yeah, I think it sounds more equitable. As someone who just paid a $10 late fee because the check didn't make it out of my car, I think that that's for all the reasons, well, $10 on $10 seems a little bit much. $10 on 500 doesn't seem like much of a dissuasion to.
What is the percentage?
I'll toss that over to Lynn.
It would be 10%.
Okay.
Yep. It's pretty standard in this.
I was cheap on the $10 on my, my late fee.
Yeah, another.
No retro.
Another change that we're talking about with the conversion that I mentioned in my previous presentation was utility bill account numbers. So what we would have BSNA do is auto assign account numbers, whereas before, I believe our utility billing clerk was assigning and account numbers are keeping track somehow, and just, I know, it sounds like a disaster, and they're very long. And so I, I am really suggesting that we go ahead and assign new account numbers to all residents of the city of Carver. Like I said, they're going to be five digits long. However, everybody's going to get a new account number, and we will start letting everybody know that, and especially for those who initiate a bill pay process through their bank, and then the bank actually mails us a check. That would be the only instance where I could see that it might, you know, be a problem, but we still get the check. We know who they are. We can search their names. So if anybody feels differently, I would.
Do it.
Yeah, I don't, no, no concern.
Yeah. So I'm just really looking forward to this. I know there's going to be some bumps, but BSNA is going to be very exciting.
The Chad and the public service team facilitated the organic collection that we had, I think it was a week or two ago, 89 vehicles. I want to thank Chad and his team. I think we had Brent Mikhailcheck and Eric Madigan out on Saturday helping residents with that. Any updates beyond that you want to share, Chad?
Just the organic recycling facility is going to be picking up materials sometime this week. They're having some logistical issues. Maybe worst case scenario, Monday or Tuesday, but they're looking at probably about 60 cubic yards of materials. So it's not a lot for a city our size, but we guys have a pretty standard, so I'll give you a tonnage once, once they weigh in.
And then sidewalk cafe ordinance, Vicky is working with Dave on a revision to that, that we want to have the city council to consider. So at the time, the sidewalk cafe ordinance was drafted, it was just after our 2017 project. And at the time, really the only consideration was Harvey's, and I think to the, I think, based on all the hard work that a lot of folks have done, there's been a lot more investment and opportunities, and people have been using that. But the ordinance, I would say, is somewhat overcooked and maybe doesn't, it is, I think, focused a lot on liquor use, which can be. And so we, we talked a lot about maybe kind of bifurcating that issue into like a liquor use and non-liquor use, and maybe kind of making the language a little bit more consumable to folks so that they don't automatically need to call the city to figure out what this actually means. And so Vicky is going to be working with Dave and with some assistance from Aaron, because it'll have to go through the planning commission because it's situated in the zoning ordinance right now. But really just an effort to kind of clean up right size and say, okay, this worked maybe initially, but based on some feedback that we've gotten and just kind of implementing it, it could maybe use a little cleanup just to, to make sure it's right size for what we have today and make sure that we're not trying to solve for issues that we don't have. City seasonal hours, we've kind of shared this a couple of times, but just emphasizing that the city hall is going to switch over to a seasonal schedule on Monday, June 12. So that's Monday through Thursday from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and then on Fridays from 7 a.m. to 11 a.m. And we're going to be closed on Monday, June 19th and observance of Juneteenth. And so our regular scheduled meetings on the 19th are rescheduled to the 26th, so that's the next time that we'll be meeting at that work session. Todd Hubmer and Aaron Schmidt, we're going to be sharing a levy project update with all our new funding. We've had a couple of update conversations, and so we want to kind of lay out kind of a schedule and next steps, and give the council an opportunity to ask questions, share input on kind of where the project goes from here. Had a conversation with Mike Wollin, the commander from the sheriff's office, and so we're planning to do the kickoff of that kind of regional pilot on, starting in July 3rd. So that'd be the third quarter, Q3, for those of in the biz, right? One of the things that's. Yeah, yeah, just making sure y'all listen. So the, one of the things that Mike agreed to that I think will be a real benefit to this is the sheriff's office agreed to double logo the vehicles. So it'll say Carver, city of Carver and city of Victoria. So it represents in a more physical and visual, visual way that there's, at least in this interim period for the remainder of the year, a collaboration that's going. And so I think it'll give a sense of like, when you see vehicles at different times of the day, we can, aside from the data that we want to provide, it'll show a visual, visualization of like what that might look like, and anecdotally can come up with some pieces. And then what I shared during the council meeting, Leah Davis from ABDO is going to be coming out on the 17th to give an overview of the classification and compensation study, and hopefully be a resource to you on what that looks like and what you can expect from that process. So happy to answer any questions about any of these items or items that I did not cover.
With the pilot project with the sheriff's office, we will be getting response data through that pilot period. Is that what we asked for? What was the data?
The data is kind of, Dana Hardy, myself and Mike Wollin are going to be meeting on a regular basis. We haven't, we haven't narrowed in on what the data looks like that will provide you with meaningful information. You know, the, I would say like response, call response data isn't necessarily going to give you the best representation of how it's working. So it, it might be a mix of multiple things.
Okay.
It might be frankly talking to folks like Joey and say, like seeing how it's working, what they're seeing, combined with data, combined with call laws, combined with response times. But I don't think, I'm not aware or ever thought of or heard of, like, you know, this number or this performance measure is going to tell us whether this is a success or not. It'll be a bit of the gut and a bit of the data, so.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Joey, any updates?
No, I just want to express thanks for something we approved on our agenda at our last meeting, which was utilizing some of the pavement management plan, extra funds because of the underbid on Bluff Road. That section of road was in terrible shape, and it was just really nice to see us use the funds and also for it to be done so quickly. So they tore that all up, graded it nice in one day on Friday, and today I saw them rolling it flat, so beautiful, really nice.
Chrissy?
I have a couple of questions first. Chad, on Sixth Street, do you know when the plan is when they're actually going to put that next layer of pavement down?
They should be prepping all the iron today, tomorrow paving, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, will it, will the road be completely closed down then, or are they going to do lane one and then the other side?
It'll be open for traffic.
Okay, so I went up there today, and I don't know what we can, if, or what we can do about this, but they have it down to one lane, and they don't have, there's no flaggers at the top or bottom, so when you get up to, this is the sport, so when we got up to the senior center, there was many pieces of equipment and bobcats moving around, and then cars getting stuck behind that, and then you couldn't see around to see if you should shoot through the lane or not. So if we're going to be having one lanes and road closures, I think that we maybe need to look at having some flaggers in there. I don't know what that's going to take, but it was, it was kind of dangerous today when we got to the top of Sixth Street by the, the senior center. Because again, then people are coming out of there, and then they're whipping to go up the hill because they don't want to go down, so it was a lot.
I'll reach out to those folks tomorrow morning.
Okay, okay, and then we should be done not long after.
Correct.
That, right, so perfect. Another question on the streets, I've been getting a lot of questions about downtown. There's been lines drawn like between the gate, the getaway saying stop and start, and some over here, I, please tell me what that is.
So MetroNet is going to be installing conduit for fiber optics.
Okay.
So what you'll see is white flags going parallel with the street, but then sometimes they have to cross over. So that's for, when you do a locate ticket, that went from Jonathan Carver Parkway all the way to Main Street East. So people would have to walk that entire section and mark everything. This narrows that scope of locating utilities down.
Oh, so stop means stop doing locates past this point?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
I saw them out doing surveying on my route here, and I was like, what are we doing? Okay, thank you.
And they should be starting, I got word today that they're going to be starting tomorrow.
Okay, all right. I think, I actually just, do we have HPC next week? We will have a meeting, so they will have a meeting next week for HPC.
That's all I have. All right, Eric?
Yeah, just a couple of notes from the May 25th Southworth Transit Meeting. I had a chance to meet their new CEO, who is Eric Hanson. They are looking to expand airport service from the Eden Prairie facility. So scheduled runs on the hour, that might help alleviate some of the, what we lost here with our prime service to the airport. So you'd be able to park at the Eden Prairie Station, which has a lot of expanded parking. One other note there, we toured the station, they do not expect the rail service to come into effect until 2028, which is a significant delay, beyond the significant delay.
Beyond the significant.
Right, so originally, 2019 pushed to 2025, 26 now, they expect 28.
Wow.
Right, so anyone thought they'd catch the train in Eden Prairie with all that construction going on? On the off-ramp, that is, that is not because the train's coming.
Did they tell you when that off-ramp opens?
The off-ramp, was it?
Mid-July. Mid-July.
Oh, is it? Okay, I thought it was.
I get their newsletter.
Okay, then they're ahead of schedule, I think, that's great.
Thank you. Let's see, you guys all know, we, in a like literal last minute photo finish, the legis, the state legislature gave the city of Carver $6 million in bonding under House File 669. It was kind of cool because it was the week I was watching my nephews, so you're literally watching the House floor debate, and Luke was asking all kinds of questions. Why is he saying that? Doesn't he want to give you money? What's going on? So really cool. The bike rodeo was at the fire station a couple of weeks ago, really, really fun event, and that's a really great collaboration between the fire department and some community members who put that on, so that was fun. Kudos to Chad and his crew for being out there on Memorial Day weekend doing the yard and garden organic waste event. Showed up there probably at about 11 o'clock, I think, or a couple hours into it, and I was truly concerned that Chad was going to be like, oh, we've had seven cars. So it was really popular and lots of, a handful of folks who made numerous trips and really made the most of it. So, um, it was really popular and lots of, a handful of folks who made numerous trips and really made the most of it. So, um, good to see people using that. Um, for the last couple of years, I have, um, the, um, VFW and the Legion do Memorial Day cemetery visits. So, uh, myself and some folks from Carver Fire were part of that procession where, um, we started off at East Union, then we did St. Nix, and then we did, um, Mount Hope. Thank you for making the cemetery look so great that day, cause there's a lot of folks in there and lots of eyeballs on what's been weed-whipped and what hasn't, so appreciate that. Let's see, last week, I participated in a Braver Angels Managing Difficult Conversations Workshop. Um, it was through the League, um, and also through the Minnesota Counties Association. If you guys ever get the opportunity to do it, it was free.
Wow.
Do it. It was so, so good. I will, if anybody's interested, I got an extra, um, handout that I can share with you guys, but it was just a really, really good workshop. Um, I mentioned earlier that I participated in the League's Legislative Updates webinar. A lot of that stuff, um, as far as like paid family leave, cannabis, um, lots of stuff that they were like, we know this is coming, but we still have to dig deeper into it. There's a lot of stuff that got accomplished and passed last year, so, um, more, more to come. And then last, but certainly not least, um, congratulations, uh, to the Jorgensen family. Baker Jorgensen was born last week, on June 1st, little baby boy, so. That is it for me, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion by council member Pershman and a second by council member McKnight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.